Brought a jacket with me. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and start. Thank you. Good to see you. I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, June 27, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez.
Here.
City Attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We're gonna start with an invocation by Pastor John Crow of the Worship Center. Welcome. And the pledge led by Mayor Potem Dusty Wright.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you that you're in charge of it. We thank you for each and every person on this board as they start to make decisions and they have plans and directions. God, I pray that with everything that we do, you give us wisdom. And we just wanna honor you with every decision that we make, every, everything that we choose to do, God, we wanna honor you. And so I just pray a blessing over them and peace over them and this whole meeting. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's follow me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we're gonna start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And we're gonna move on to public comment. We have two signed up. Kimberly. Okay, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name for the record. And you will have three minutes.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kimberly Paneda. I have a property at Seven Ten Dooley that I've been working on for a few months trying to get a carport built. I've spoken to a few different people. A few weeks ago, I spoke with Ms. Stella Rial, who I've not met in person, so I'm sorry if you're here and I don't know who you are. She went and checked out my property. And there are carports on both sides of me, as well as across the street, that don't meet the same specifications that they're asking me to meet. She had gone before or said she was gonna speak with the city attorney to try to get that approved or overwritten or to try to get me an approval. And she said it was a no-go, so this was my next step, to try to get that approved, since I've got so many around me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, this is not an action item, so we can't do anything about it tonight, but maybe we can figure that out?
I think it's coming at the next commission meeting.
At the next? Okay, okay. So it'll be at the next commission meeting and we can discuss it and figure out what we can do to help you out, okay? Thank you. You too, thank you. And next, we have Donna Turnbull. I did try to call you back the other day.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I did. Signs on Paiute and parked by the fire station.
Yes, and I don't know what the protocol is for the city commission meetings. I've been to several of the county commission meetings. And maybe I'm supposed to take this up directly with my commissioner in the area. But I was wondering how best to find out the status of the park up by the fire station at the top of 10th Street. I've lived in that neighborhood since 1983, raised a son there. He's 22 years old, played at the park. I know people have made buying decisions on where to buy their home based on a park in their neighborhood. So I don't know what the proper way is to find what is the status. I was at a meeting where you had inquired about getting quotes to replace the park.
Yes, that's been a few months ago. Yeah, I, maybe we can talk about that later? Okay, yeah. And she's shaking her head, so maybe she'll give us an update.
Yeah, so I.
And then, and then you said signs about?
Yeah, there are signs on Paiute. I own a home at the very top of Sunrise, second house from the top. And I've walked those foothills there again for the last 40 years and have not seen abuse of the land and have seen many neighbors and people that come and walk the foothills. We choose an area with land around us so that we can enjoy it. And I have no problem with the signs that the city put up that say no dumping in the area, although I, you know, the only, the only dumping I've seen has been by landscapers who will, you know, dump debris up there that is more natural to the, to the landscape. But I have a great problem with there being a no trespassing. Violators will be prosecuted. Apparently, I'm a violator and I need to be prosecuted. I've walked those foothills and you may think that people just ignore those signs so they, they'll walk up there anyway. But there's a lot of people that abide by the signs and the laws. And a lot of those little people have been riding their little bicycles on that little cleared off property over there, not harming a soul, building a few little moguls, having a great time for over the last 40 years I've lived up there. And now those little kids don't have a park. And now they can't even be on the natural desert that they live by. I've heard of no injury up on that property. And I was pretty much disgusted when I saw a police officer with his lights on up there probably six weeks ago. There was a young couple holding hands, obviously no kids, but were just gonna go take a walk. And he has to pull up with his lights on and have a conversation with them to get off the, and get back onto the curb area. I, I, is, am I at the right venue to make this complaint about those signs? And, and if they have to stay, I pretty much insist that they go up everywhere else on every piece of city property around town.
Okay.
I'm fed up.
Yeah.
With the control.
Gotcha. Thank you. And yes, this is the right venue, yes.
Thank you very much. And I know you're, you're in strong support of the park. I just wanna know where's the best way for me to get an update.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I don't wanna comment too much on that. I will tell you that I've received, when I was the commissioner for that area, and Carl Melton is your commissioner, but when I was the commissioner, I, I received numerous calls both ways about the signs and the very thing that you're talking about. And I will tell you, when I was the commissioner, I don't know if Commissioner Melton's received them, but I'll tell you, I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place, 'cause you've got people that are like, keep 'em off the property. You've got people that are like, let 'em walk on the property. And I'm like, I throw my hands up. So, yeah, yeah, both. And I would suggest if there was a police officer up there, it was because somebody probably called. I don't think that they randomly just drive by and see. I, I am confident that they would not just drive by and pull somebody over. So somebody had to have called and complained about that couple on that property. But anyway, I, I, we can't talk about it too much, but afterwards, maybe, or if you wanna stay, maybe we can, okay?
Do we currently own that property up there?
Yes.
It's that strip just to the north of the fire station, right?
Yes, we own it.
How far up? Because I do notice that they've put signs where the BLM, I think, starts, or, you know what I mean?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I don't, do you? Chief Denton can give you an update.
Okay. I'll just, it's just a question.
We're gonna make you work till the very last minute.
He's gonna update you on everything. Just kidding.
So, Mayor, Mayor Potem Commissioners, those signs were put up at the request of a resident. Who lives right there next to where the land is pretty cleared off, talking about the north and, north of the fire station, all the way to where the houses start up again, due to motorcycle traffic, four wheeler traffic, stuff like that, that was clearly, clearly a neighborhood problem. So it was a choice by previous city management to put the signs up there, no trespassing signs, to try to control some of that. But yes, we still get calls up there all the time for that.
Just a suggestion, but would it be possible for us to change the sign to no off-road rather than no trespass?
It's above my pay grade, sir.
Something for us to look at, you know, that way if they, because that is, there's a lot of walking trails. And I do believe, once you get past that, there's BLM up there.
Yes.
There's actually a trail there.
Some of it's BLM, if I'm not mistaken, some of it's state, some of it's private now, because the hay trail.
That one's all.
When I was a kid, I used to drive my four wheeler up over the hay and all the way to West Side Road. So you, there's a fence that goes across that trail now, which I don't know if that's state or private in that area, but Ms. Burns has that.
I was just gonna say, I just got a call as recent as, probably a week ago from her. Yeah.
She has it pretty well mapped out.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue. I have walked up there many times and met with the neighbors and talked to them. And it's not, well, I don't wanna say it's an issue. It's an issue for them. But again, we're, I don't know if you've received any calls. I, okay, perfect. Because I have been stuck between a rock and a hard place, because I don't disagree with you, but I understand why they don't want motorcycles all hours of the night either. And I know you're gonna say they're not there, but they swear there is. And I'm like, listen, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. Have I personally seen them? I have not personally seen. I've seen motorcycles. I haven't obviously seen them 11, 12 o'clock at night. There was a story about the lady that has the one house that's just, so if you're facing the property just to the left of it, and there was a group of people shooting off fireworks right next to her house. And, and she was concerned, because she was elderly, and she was concerned that it was gonna hit her. I mean, there's, there's been lots and lots of stories that, that I have received as a commissioner and even as the mayor about that area. It is, I don't know what, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, it's not the wild, wild west up there.
No, I get it.
All the other city properties that don't have signs.
I know. And I'm sorry, but, yeah, I don't wanna get into a big, because I can't, because we can't even take action on it. I'm just, I'm only commenting on it because I have received a lot of calls. I know it's not the wild, I get it. I live in the neighborhood too. I understand. I mean, I literally live in that neighborhood. So, anyway, we do need to move on. Or does anybody else have any questions?
I was just gonna see if we could have staff look into the options up there in that area and then bring that back to us at a later time. Or send it to us in an email so we can look at it.
Yeah, I spent, I've had numerous conversations with, obviously with Brian about it and for several years now. So I, you know, I hear what you're saying. I get it. But, anyway, okay, moving on. Let's move on, shall we? All right. We are gonna move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem Commission. To address Commissioner Reardon, we will look at it. If it's a matter of the vehicles that the constituents had, we can probably do what Commissioner Reardon said and say no motorized vehicles. We'll look at that and bring that back if we have to. The Paiute Park, I have the design that was sent to me from Eric and Belinda. I just haven't gotten to it to bring it back, because I wanted to bring a whole presentation of all our parks. We can do that probably in July to get it going. It looks really beautiful, the design that they have. So I'll, I'll bring that back. That's on me. It's in my inbox right now. The railroad, we're baby steps, baby steps. The railroad had sent us the scope of work for the electrical, the electric, electrical work that was needed. We got, we got that scope of work. We will put it out for bids, requests for quotes or requests for bids. And it came back on Monday. I signed the contract for the company. And it's Stone Electric, and they will start it next week. They expect about two to two and a half weeks to get that complete, to do the trenching, but of course, they need to do the line locates and all that. And Bob Johnson would kill me because they gave me that, assuming all goes well, because my glass is always half full and Bob's is always half empty. All goes well, we should open it in August. Hopefully that, where we would be in August, assuming all goes well with the electrical work, because as, once we get the electrical work, it's just a matter of the railroad connecting the arms and the signals to it, so. I sent the email out to commission, I think it was last night, about the street assessments. That's just a very preliminary report. There was a lot of reports. I think that's probably the most useful. It tells you kind of the road conditions. Just wanted to let you know in case you hadn't seen your email, that that is in your, in your email. And then, on a happier note, I am happy, happy to announce that Deputy, Deputy Chief Cuneharo has accepted the position of Police Chief. And this is effective today. Both chiefs, they're both, I call them chief squared, because we have two right now. They're preparing for the smooth transition. Chief Denton's last day in the office is Friday. His last official day with the city is July 21st. But we're happy to have Cuneharo, I can't call him Cooney anymore. Chief Cuneharo as our new chief, so congratulations, Chief Cuneharo.
I'm calling him Cooney, I don't care.
It's so hard.
I'm like, what is his first name, anyway? I don't even know. Just kidding.
It's David Cuneharo, so that's all I got.
Thank you. That's probably the number one question that I get, is the opening of that. And if there's a day goes by that I don't get it, I'm pretty shocked, so I'm glad for that update.
Yeah, and I can get the design to you all just for your information tomorrow, so.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Commissioner McDonald.
I have a couple of remarks. We, I am reporting on both Dudley and the cleanup, and they're going to coincide here at one point. The Dudley School experienced a delay on the contractors. That has been worked out on the CID permit related to the individual permits on having a general contractor involved. All permits have been reviewed and approved, so that part is good. So we won't belabor that. The contractors are to get back in there, and that is going to be general hydraulics for the plumbing, a stone electric for the electrical, and the mechanics on the AC heating and venting. And then for the refrigeration, wall and roof is gonna be white sands construction. So this will complete all of the things that need to be done inside the building. And that will allow the volunteers to go back inside the, the building to do a lot of painting. And so Joe Levandowski, who is over the project, he is going to get a, I guess, a list of dates out that he will need volunteers to come out. And so if you're able to come out 30 minutes, an hour or two, we would appreciate it, because right now, I think we're gonna start painting the exterior walls and doing a little bit of that, so that when we can move inside, when the air is on, so we can work all day long, this will be good. And, and that way, it encourages people driving by to see that the work is continuing. The cleanup is gonna be on July 15th. And what we are doing, is if we get enough volunteers, we're going to include Dudley School to go out and clean up. And we've been doing that all along, but this will help eliminate some of the weeds and a lot of the things that are dumped onto the property, you know, while we're absent. On last week, the mayor and the acting city manager and also Parks and Recreation was at Dudley School, because we had Zach Quinero from the National Hispanic Cultural Center out of Albuquerque there. And the Historical Society has already had conversations with them prior to the visit. The NHCC is the only center in the nation. So they have contacted the Tulare Rosa Basin about partnering with them in the new ambassador program. What this does is add a new resource to the effort. They will assist in any manner they can. The mission is primarily to offer their resources in preserving and educating all persons about the Hispanic culture through art, music, dance, promotion, and historical archives. This is a great honor to have an organization of this stature recognize Dudley School, Community Center, and Park. Zach, after the visit, did advise us that he would be recommending the facility to his boss, the Secretary of Cultural Affairs, and then the governor, that we would be accepted in the ambassador program. Now, Joe did not obligate the city in any fashion. Once the documents and the offer is official, then the Tulare Rosa Basin Historical Society and the city staff commissioners will review and make the final decision from there. So it might sound boring, but it is truly exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, that is not boring at all. I don't know if you guys caught that. New Mexico is the only state in the entire country that has a Hispanic Cultural Center in the entire country. I mean, that's kinda crazy that we're the only ones that have that. It, it really is a big deal. And it was exciting to listen to the plans and the, the opportunities that may come out of that. That's, that's pretty exciting for our community. He made the comment that he wants to put a spotlight on southern New Mexico. And, and I made the comment that I'd like to put a spotlight on Alamogordo, because that's, that's a big deal. We have so much history here. And people need to recognize that. I mean, we, we're very blessed in our community to have the kind of history that we have, so, pretty exciting. Thank you for that, Commissioner McDonald. Does anybody else have anything? Commissioner Reardon?
At the last meeting, I had asked about Oregon Avenue, and we got our explanation on it. But when we go about this road study, could, I would really like to see that road kind of put into the mix. I know it stated in the email that it was gonna cost five million, but if it costs five million today, if we kick the can down the road another 10 years, what's it gonna cost us at that point? You know, even if we have to put it in in phases, you know, where we, you know, do, do a third of it, third of it, third of it. I know for a fact the road has not been touched since 86 or 88, somewhere around in there. So I just wanted to, you know, after reading that report that you sent us the other night, you know, we've got no shortage of bad roads to deal with, but that is a, a main one that needs some attention, so. And then, I'm sure a lot of y'all saw that deal on Facebook about the spray park. When we do our.
The what?
There was a post on there, somebody had put about, you know, coming to the commission and requesting that we build a spray park. I don't know if y'all saw it.
I didn't see it.
There was quite a few comments, but when we do our park study that we're looking at, or our park deal that we're looking at, could we get some just rough idea of what it would cost to put one of those in somewhere? I remember we looked at it when, what's the new one, is it called Kids Own?
The Kids Own, yeah.
You had like a splash pad?
Yeah, it's a splash pad, like that one in Las Cruces, when you, when you first come in on the left-hand side, you know? There was a post about it, but more than likely, it's gonna be too expensive for us to afford at this point. But I don't know, if we could get a rough guesstimate of what it would run to, to.
I remember Mark Threadgill, there was a whole plan and everything set out. I don't know if we still have it, but we can dust that off and look at it and use that as a starting point to look at it.
Update today's pricing for, okay. That's all.
That's it. Well, I was very much in favor of that splash pad at the time. And I was kinda disappointed we didn't do it.
Cost too much money and couldn't afford it.
Yeah, I think people were concerned about the water too, so, which is, of course, an issue. Having said that, I am pretty excited to see Ridgecrest getting done. Have you gotten any complaints about the?
Done, yeah.
They better not either. It's like, since 2016, I've been after them about that. Well, they've been calling me about it, I've been after about that road. So thank you for that. And then, a couple of other things. I did a proclamation for the Juneteenth celebration. I was, I. I was, I spoke to, we had a great group of volunteers through the, I don't know if they even call it the RSVP program anymore, do they still call it that, the senior center? They do still call it that. I know we're not getting the federal, the federal dollars for that, but we had a great group of volunteers at the senior center the other day, invited me to come over there. Appreciated doing that. And I, I'm sure there's a whole host of other things, but I can never think of it. I probably shouldn't write that stuff down, right? Because I feel like all I do is go, 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 so. So anyway, and then, oh, and thank you to the staff for getting air back here. I heard that they were working fast and furious to do that. I'm sure HR appreciates it as well.
Facility maintenance, they were waiting on the part, and they were waiting on the part, and they were harassing the company. Because I said if we have to sit through another hot meeting like that, I don't think we're all going to come out of it alive.
Yeah. Well, what about the employees that had to work in those offices like that?
Poor HR had all the coolers in there, but yeah, shout out to facility maintenance because they were on it, and soon as the part came, they stopped everything to come.
Well, kudos to them, we really appreciate that. Of course, everybody knows that Bob Johnson is retiring. I know he's not a director, but he was definitely a regular at our city commission meetings, so hopefully he's watching tonight, and congratulations to him and, and see what the next season holds for him, and of course chief, but I'm thinking you're going to be at the next meeting, so you don't get away that easily. And congratulations again to Cooney. He's still Cooney to me, sorry, but, so congratulations to you. And with that, if anybody, nobody has anything else? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off of the consent agenda? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Milton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rudden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to new business, and before we get started, I apologize, but welcome. Superintendent Pam Renteria is here and Deputy Superintendent Colleen Tagle, welcome to the commission meeting. We don't see you very often, so welcome. And with that, we're going to move on to item nine, consider and act upon a land exchange between the city of Almagordo and Almagordo Public Schools. And this is in regards to the property, of course, the swap between the property on College Avenue and Fairgrounds Road. And Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez has some information on that.
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commission. As, as you recall, back in November of 2020, the city did a land swap with Almagordo Public Schools. We swapped our, what was our Hand Glider Park with their Chaparral. That was approved by both entities, and that was so that, that schools could build the new middle school on the Hand Glider Park. Unfortunately, recently, the school faced some additional obstacles. That area was zoned to be in the hundred-year floor, a hundred-year flood zone, and so that would require additional collaboration with FEMA, the Army Corps, and unfortunate additional, additional time. You have, as Mayor said, Acting Superintendent Pamela Renteria here, and she gave you a letter, she wrote a letter that I believe all of you have, that gives additional information.
Yes.
So when I spoke with Colleen, there were, the situation that the schools are in and in consideration with our, with us, there were three options that were presented to us. The first option, the first two options were kind of just leave as is, and then they could rent back the Chaparral property from us and build the school on there. We weren't too excited about that one because then we'd have another Oregon school situation, and that was, we weren't too, we didn't like that one. And then it was, this other one was again, leave as is, they would have to build some berms on and would have to give them access to our property, but then also the hospital would. And then the third option is just basically reverse the land swap and do another land swap, giving us back Hand Glider Park, and then they would take over Chaparral's site again. Before making any recommendations to you all, I worked with our park manager Eric Marion. Even before I went to the school board, I asked him to go look at it to see if there was anything, you know, if the land had deteriorated, and there, he was happy actually just to hear that we were considering this. There was no real deterioration to the land, it would take minor renovations. Belinda went out there, the Parks and Rec Director, to look at it. She wasn't here back when we did that swap, so I guess everybody's just pretty thrilled to actually have the consideration of getting the park back. Belinda likes the green space, Eric likes the green space. The city has not encumbered any expenses to develop Chaparral, because as you know, Chaparral's still in session. So it would be Eric, Belinda, and my recommendation to approve the land swap so that we can get our park back and we have more green space, because as you know, that's utilized for a lot of sports out, out on Grigsfield, so it'd be kind of like overflow practice fields and whatever they have planned to develop it maybe. But Belinda's here, if you have any questions related to the parks, if you have any questions for me, and of course Deputy Superintendent Colleen Tagle is here, and the acting superintendent, if you have any other questions related to the actual reports. And we stand for questions.
Anybody have any questions? It's too hot. Nobody has any questions. No? Okay. Do I have a motion to, there's no discussion, right? Nothing? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
Commissioner Burnett, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright? This is not a roll call vote, right? I'm reading that right? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? And motion, motion carries seven zero. You got your property back. All right.
Not yet, we'll get the paperwork going tomorrow.
We're done. Okay, we're going to move on to item 10, consider and act upon case V2023-0003. It's in regards to property requesting to be granted a variance, and city planner Stella Real.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. This is really going to sound familiar to you because I brought this in front of you back in March, requesting a rear setback. So just to go over the whole information for you, the property owners requesting to be granted a variance to decrease the lot size requirement per ordinance 29-03-270 from 6,000 square feet per lot to 4,001 square feet for the address at 804 Crouch and 4,490 square feet for 2507 Alaska. If you remember correctly, here's the property. Mr. and Mrs. Carlson, the property owners, are trying to retire and divide the property and sell off the set of apartments that are facing Alaska Avenue. Now, when reviewing this, like I said, they don't have the, the lot size requirement of 6,000 feet. They meet every other setback that is needed, so staff at this point is recommending approval of this. And just to give you a little bit of findings of fact on it, I'll let you back up a little bit. You all did receive in your agenda packet the preliminary survey plat, right? Or, I'm sorry, summary plat. So that's what it will look like once it's divided. We can't approve that summary plat until the variance is approved. So findings of fact, the property again is located at 84 Crouch Drive and 2507 Alaska Avenue. The request, like I mentioned, is to decrease the lot size requirement per ordinance. The application was filed on June 8th of 2023. Twenty-seven letters were mailed out to property owners of record within 250 feet from the property excluding the public right-of-way of the property for which the variance is sought. As of today, there have been no phone calls, no letters of opposition. We did receive one letter back undeliverable. So at this time, I'm open for questions, and like I said, staff recommends approval of this variance.
The utilities to the properties aren't, they're not going to be cross in property engineering?
No, no, it's not going to affect anything except for the lot size requirement.
Okay.
Will they have ample room for parking?
Yes.
With both, it looks like they do in this picture, but.
Yeah, it's not going to change any, anything at all, except for that lot size requirement. So their, their yards will just be a little smaller, but it doesn't affect parking or anything.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? No?
Make a motion to approve item 10.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ruden to approve item 10. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Milton. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 11, discuss a possible joint workshop with the Otero County Commission. Commissioner Ruden.
I was just approached by one of the county commissioners about sitting down and chit-chatting a little bit and kind of seeing where we could work together on certain things and, what projects they're working on versus what we're working on, and see if we could maybe bring some of our capital outlay money together, and I just wanted to bring it to you guys and see if you guys would be in favor, sorry, setting up a meeting to sit down with our counterparts over there. There's really no reason why we shouldn't, like once a year or whatever, sit down with them and, and just talk with them and see if there's areas that we can work together.
Yeah, Commissioner Barella did speak to me about this last week, so I'm assuming that's the same commissioner that approached you.
Yes. If you remember back in 2018, when I first got back on the commission, I requested a meeting with Otero County that never happened. So I, I think it would be a very, very good idea to sit down with them, you know, there's numerous areas in the city that we could work together and, you know, maybe save the taxpayers some money, so.
I have a question.
Yes. Commissioner McDonald.
So what in the past, and because I don't have that history, what in the past has the, the city commission and the county commission had in common?
We both serve a, a number of the same constituents. Otero County and Almagordo are one of the same, so all of our people that vote for us vote for.
I understand that part, but I was asking for projects. I haven't, I haven't seen.
Just to name a few that we could work on and we never have is, is like animal control. You know, we could, we could sit down and talk about consolidating those two into one deal and, and have one large deal rather than just, you know, have two. The PSAP was another one of those, and we finally got that done. The solid waste deal out here at our convenience center, you know, we have one, they have like 15 across the county. Maybe we could look at contributing money to Otero County and just have them run ours for us. You know, little things like that, you know, and then capital outlay money that we get, you know, maybe there's a project that all of us want to work on, you know, that, that the city and county both want to contribute to, and, you know, if we can get 750 or 800,000 and they get that, you know, that gives us a larger pool of money to work together on it. So, but, let's see, I'm just asking if we can sit down with them. If you guys don't want to, it's not a big deal, but I just, it's been a long time since the city and the county have sat down and talked to each other. And maybe this is the start of something new that would.
2016.
Was it? That's been a long time. That's been eight years ago?
Yes, it was the first year I was elected, I believe.
And the one before that was probably 10 years prior to that, so it's been a long time.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, or I don't?
Logistically, what were you thinking, like, meeting here in the chambers?
Wherever, wherever they want or we want, just set up a meeting or go down to the civic center because.
Now, the last time we had one was at the civic center.
You know, the public can attend and, and do it as a workshop, so there's really no action taken, but just have the conversation, say, hey, you know, another big one that's coming up is our, is, is the county's designing the new courthouse, you know, and, and that's kind of a big deal to Almagordo, especially if it moves out of the core of our city, you know? So just get on the same page, you know, even if we don't actually have anything that comes from the meeting, we at least sat down and had the conversation with them, you know, so.
I think it would.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I think it would be worthwhile to have some type of agenda or something, just so that we're not, you know, freely sitting there and wandering down a million different paths, but I'm open to it.
Okay, you know, like saying, just touch on a few items, okay, you know, say animal control, say solid waste, say the, you know, the courthouse or, and then whatever ideas they come up with, you know, maybe have three or four or five different items that we can discuss. Keep the meeting somewhat short, so it doesn't drag out for five hours.
I think we should probably find out if the other two commissioners feel the same way as well.
I, I think it's on their agenda at their next meeting, I believe, so.
Well, I was just thinking, if we're going to discuss things, I said, I know you're talking animal control or what's the other one? The courthouse, courthouse? But, you know, a, a big deal that came up earlier is the internet connection that we have in this area.
Yes, the broadband.
Because I, I, I think, right now, I think that probably has, I'm not saying, I'd say top billing over the courthouse, because that's not going to happen right away.
Yeah, it'll probably be quite a few years. They, I think the county's been working on that broadband deal quite a bit, but, you know, we can jump on the bandwagon with them if we got to get some funding, and we can talk to our state legislators and, and say, guys, this is a project that we want to work on together, can you guys help us?
There's more money in that.
There is.
Than anything else that I've.
Yes, and that's, that's a good one. I think that should be on the agenda, you know, if the meeting happens, so.
Well, I will say, we have seen the county and the city work together recently on PSAP, which was kind of a big deal, so there has been some, some.
That would be a long time coming.
What's that? I don't know. But anyway, there has been some working together, and there's probably a better way to put that, but yes, that was a long time coming, I agree. Okay, so I don't know, we don't do anything, right? What do we do?
So is direction to staff to, after the county meeting, to work with Pam and to get, I mean, I guess I don't know any direction on what you all.
Yeah, I guess it's based off of what the county decides. If the county wants to have the meeting, then we'll have acting manager and Pam.
Does everybody support that idea, or?
I have no issue.
As long as there's some kind of a real agenda that.
I mean, if they brought two things, or we brought two things, some topics, okay, these are what we're going to discuss.
Right.
Because if, you're going in there to talk about a million things, then it's going to be a waste of everybody's time.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want just like a potluck or something, yeah, gotcha.
I don't remember.
Okay, so I guess the direction to staff would be to, let's see what, what they say at the next meeting, and then maybe reach out and.
If the county's open to it, then we.
If they're open to it, maybe we could.
We can do that.
Yeah. Okay, very good. All right, I think that is it. We'll move on to item 12, adjourn into executive closed session in compliance with 10-15-1 to discuss limited personnel matters, the city manager. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Is that Commissioner McDonald?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, a second, Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Milton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rudden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned.
Yeah.
Most days.